Good afternoon and welcome to the January 26 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. I would ask if you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would silence those now or turn them off, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant, you're here to address us about a case today, there are sign-up sheets like this, they're on the table outside the chambers, and we will hear you when we hear the case in order. And with that, we'll move to accept the minutes of the January 9 meeting. Second, cast your votes and the minutes are accepted. Continuance requests, Aubrey?
Yes, we have eight uncontested requests for continuance on your agenda would be items B-15 through B-22. The first one is SPUD 942 to defer to February 9. Item 16 is KC-6862 defer to February 9. Item 17 for KC-6863 defer to February 9. Item B-18 for CE-940 defer to February 23. Item 19 for SPUD 917 defer to February 23. Item 20 for case DA-24853 defer to March 9. Item 21 for SPUD 937 defer to March 23. And item 22 for case SPUD 945 to defer indefinitely.
Did anyone come here today to address us on the cases just read? Move approval of the uncontested request. Second a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the continuance, uncontested continuance requests. Cast your votes and that's approved.
We also have new requests for continuance for case item B-11 for PC-10486 to defer to February 9.
And I'd like to ask that case number 12 be continued to February 9 as well, our next meeting in two weeks?
Second.
Okay, cast your votes and 11 and 12 are continued two weeks. Are there any continuous requests from the public today? Here and now we'll go to the consent docket.
Okay, there are three items on the consent docket. The first one is case PUD-SP-1608 for a specific plan for PUD-16085. The second is ABC-871 for an ABC overlay to I-2 district. And the third one is CE-950, it's a utility easement on South May Avenue.
Is anyone here today to talk to us about items 1, 2, or 3 on our agenda?
Move the consent docket.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes and that's approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item number 4 is case C-6856, the final plat of Brookfield Estates located southwest 164th and west of MacArthur. And this also is seeking a variance to the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. If you will remember, this was continued from two weeks ago to allow, I believe, staff to review the revised plat. What we've done is move our access drive literally as far east as the development will allow. If you'll remember, two weeks ago, our final plat matched the preliminary plat to a T. Traffic staff at the last minute decided that we needed a variance that was not addressed at the preliminary plat stage dealing with site distance. That is what the variance is in the staff report as TE number 6. What they've also asked is that we make submittal to the Traffic and Transportation Commission for a reduction in the speed limit along 164th. I can report that we have already made that submittal, and I believe that'll go before the commission sometime in February. It has no bearing on the decision here today. We would still like the variance so that we can move forward and we will be moving on to the February Traffic and Transportation Commission on the reduction in speed. So with that, we have a final plat that conforms to the preliminary plat. Most of the variances were properly identified at that time and were sought and granted. We're now left with just the one being the site distance. If you look at the plat, we've moved it literally as far east as we can get it to conform as well as we can to site distance. So with that, we'd ask for your approval and we would like to go ahead and move forward with the variance to the site distance.
David, what would the speed limit adjustment be or need to be?
Well, I never purport to be any sort of traffic engineer or any engineer, period. It's my understanding that traffic staff believes it needs to be 40 miles an hour rather than the 45 miles an hour it is now.
Well, my general editorial comment, it'll apply to a case later in today's agenda, is that dropping the speed limit in order to end up with a suitable site distance seems to be not a solution to anything because motorists tend to drive the speed they feel safe, the speed they're accustomed to driving, and the next case will actually be dropping the speed limit theoretically from 45 to 30. Well, real world, on the ground, that's never going to happen. People are still going to drive 40 or 45 miles an hour, and that doesn't really solve anything as it relates to public safety. And I don't know why we even consider those kinds of changes as being acceptable when we're looking at plats. I'm sorry that it came up late in the game for you, David, on this one, what was not an issue at the preliminary plat stage.
Correct, and it is what it is.
It is what it is. It would have been nice to have it occur then. Pat? Your microphone, Pat? Sorry.
Excuse me, I move we continue this particular item for at least two weeks to let them look at a decision.
Well, and I can't agree to do that, and I'll tell you why. When you look at the width that this development has, there is nowhere else that this intersection can go. It has moved literally as far east as we can go. There has been a big push by the chairman and this commission for the engineers and representatives like myself to get their work done in a timely fashion so that final plats end up where they belong on the consent docket, so that people like me can stand up at this podium and say, "Our final plat conforms to the preliminary plat." We did that, and I don't think it's fair or incumbent upon my client to have to bear the responsibility of things that weren't done in a timely fashion when our final plat matched the preliminary plat to a T. Now, we continued it two weeks last time to try to work with staff to move it to satisfy them, and we did that. So two weeks isn't going to get us anywhere on this. I don't know, have you ever heard me not agree to a continuance when it's been asked for? But in this, if it could serve a purpose, I'd do it. We've met with staff over and over and over again, and staff is comfortable with this. Public Works is comfortable with the solution that we've modified our plat to.
But a 5 mile per hour reduction in speed is nothing.
Agreed.
It's not going to do anything to improve public safety.
I would agree, and that's why we just prefer to get the variance, move on. Traffic staff would like that submitted, and we submitted it, and we'll see what happens in February, but that's why I believe, you know, this is a final plat. This was a PUD in which the site plan that you see here was made a part of the PUD that you saw at that time, then you saw it at the preliminary plat, which was approved. And now we're at the final plat stage, and it's a little late, in my opinion, to be trying to wholesale change and hold us up at this point. But I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm always comfortable with continuing it, but there's nothing to be gained from a continuance here. I mean, I'd love to hear if anybody else had differing opinions, but continuing just for the sake of continuing when we know what the conditions are, I don't think benefits anybody.
My point is essentially the same as the chairman's, but receipt of this email from the traffic folks, and when they say that providing an access location that meets the city's decision site distance criteria is essential for public safety, you need to reduce the speed limit from 45 to 40, although I don't think it's going to make a hell of a difference, but rather than vote for a variance that's going to establish a precedent that might be a problem for public safety, I would think that a continuance, until you go before the Traffic and Transportation Commission to try to reduce that, I would vote for it if you reduce the speed limit, in spite of the fact that I think they'll drive as fast as they want to. But I still think if you have a 40 mile an hour speed limit, then the traffic folks are comfortable with that. And then counting the number of people here, there are six.
You know, and that's fine, I'm not good at math, which is why I went to law school, but I can count to six. However, it's a meaningless gesture to me to go reduce the speed from 45 to 40, and it seems unfair to be dealing with this delay at the final plat stage. I mean, this thing has been in front of this commission in some form or fashion for the better part of a year, and we continued it two weeks last time. And every time we've sat down, we've rushed around to do everything we can. What we can do, if we get the variance, we're still going before the Traffic and Transportation Commission to reduce it. And so to me, the question is, if they refuse to do it, then are we going to be denied a final plat that conforms to a preliminary plat?
I would probably consider a conditional variance, voting for the variance only on the condition that you get the speed limit removed, reduced.
Well, the variance is only necessary without it. So what I'm saying is the variance provides a stopgap. We get the variance, and we're still going to push forward and go before the Traffic and Transportation Commission. But I can't recommend to my client to condition approval of a plat that, again, meets the preliminary plat, which is the test that you're, you know, to apply, on what another independent board might do with the item.
David, just for clarity, what is the date that this would be heard by the Traffic Commission? You said February? When is their meeting?
That's a good question. We submitted the letter to staff, and they said that they're overwhelmed and they're going to try their best to get it on February. I don't know when that meeting is. Again, it's a bit shocking that it's taken this long to get to this point, but...
Okay, Richard, give us a date.
February 20 is the next Traffic Commission meeting, and it is already scheduled to be on that agenda.
Okay.
So that doesn't allow my client to move forward until March? And again, this is a final plat?
You know, I think that's perhaps unfortunate, but there's a reason why we don't just give you a preliminary plat and let you go. I mean, there's a process of review and refinement, and, you know, you've got to have that final plat approval. I'm not prepared to vote for variance today, so, I mean, I guess we are where we are.
And that's fine. I mean, I guess the question I'd ask then is, where would you have us put the drive? I mean, we got some variances at the preliminary plat, which is where these are supposed to be dealt with, and now we get all the way to a time where my client's literally ready to turn dirt, and we discover this at the, you know, 11th hour. And we worked through this issue prior to, up to two weeks ago, with staff. And the request was made, let us continue it two weeks so that staff can, I guess, generate a new staff report, but Public Works is comfortable with where we are. There's no other place to put it, and so again...
They're comfortable at what point, David?
They are comfortable with where our access point is shown.
40 miles an hour?
As is.
As is.
It was, as a favor, we said, sure, we will make submittal to lower the speed limit, and we agreed to do that. We've submitted it now, and it's in their hands, but Public Works is satisfied.
Well, Public Works is who in this case? I mean...
We met with Eric Winger and Debbie Miller.
From a traffic standpoint, we know that that's as far east as they can move it. Lowering the speed limit is the option to make that work. They don't have any more property to move it any further east. However, anybody driving down that road at 45 mile an hour is not going to see that coming up. Their construction drive, where their trucks are coming in and out right now turning dirt, is at the original location and does not meet site distance. So, you know, I mean, they're moving the driveway, we're going to take it to Traffic Commission, we're going to see about lowering the speed limit, and we're going to give Traffic Commission the option of having the developer install a flashing beacon, warning beacon before if we can't lower the speed limit. It is 45 miles an hour from Pennsylvania all the way west to Mustang Road, 164th Street.
David, I'm sympathetic, but I don't know how to solve it. I mean, counting noses.
I mean, if everybody's here isn't willing to cast a yes vote to the variance, there's nothing I can do, which is fine, I just, I mean, it's, I don't think it's fair to my client because continuing two weeks doesn't change anything. If we had a bunch of different locations, we could put it, I could see where, let's try to work this out. Two weeks, it won't even be two weeks now, it'll be over a month, and it won't change it. The location is where it is. We can move forward with the reduction speed independent of what happens here.
What is the variance for? Is the variance for the entrance or the variance for the speed limit?
Site distance.
Site distance at the current speed limit. It doesn't meet the site distance requirements at 45 miles an hour.
Is it 40 miles an hour?
That's what Richard is saying, yes.
490 feet is for 40 miles an hour, 470 feet is what it measures as.
So no.
So it doesn't meet it, but 40 is, it'll give people a better chance to see someone either turning into it as they come over the hill, or somebody coming out, will be able to see someone coming over the hill and have a chance.
But what it's saying is even at 40, it doesn't meet it, and so we're not really solving anything. I guess we still have to have the variance.
At 40 miles an hour, it's 20 feet short at the site distance.
So we have to have the variance no matter what. So perhaps we move forward today with the understanding that we're moving forward with the reduction, but if we're going to have to have the variance no matter what, I'm not sure what the reduction's going to solve. We still can't meet it under any circumstance. It would literally be a continuance for the sake of continuance.
I don't agree with that statement. I think the continuance is for the sake of bringing it into compliance as close as can be done with whatever improvements Traffic Commission may require. I really don't know why we're hearing this before the Traffic Commission takes action. I just, I don't think it should have even been set on the agenda.
Well, and I'll tell you why, because we worked with Public Works and they were satisfied, and then Traffic asked, "Would you mind filing an application to reduce the speed?" And we said, "Sure." But Public Works is satisfied with what, they were satisfied two weeks ago when we came up with this solution. So if one of you isn't willing, then we'll...
So if they're going to have to have the variance anyway, it does not, the 5 miles an hour is not going to reduce the need for variance, and we'll be right back here in two weeks or a month doing the same thing, but what have we accomplished?
It'll be a variance for 20 feet instead of a variance for 160 feet.
No, I mean, well, hypothetically, because of the reduction in speed, but the location is the location, and it doesn't matter what the speed limit is, where the location is is where it's going to be. And so it begs the question, then, if Traffic Commission were to say no, does that mean that we'd have our plat denied because it was not as conforming as perhaps it could have been at 40 feet?
Hopefully, it won't come to that.
Well, I would hope not. It's a final plat. The test is, does it meet the preliminary plat? And it does, to a T, and Public Works has signed off on it. My client is generous enough to go ahead and put forth the application to reduce the speed pursuant to what Traffic Staff has asked, but it doesn't change anything about this plat. It won't change what I say from this podium in a month from now. Everything will move along the same track.
But I'm just, like I say, I'm sympathetic, David, I'm counting noses, and I count at least three noses.
Fair enough, so we'll...
Which is, I mean, all I can do with it.
We'll continue it to the first meeting in March, and who knows what the Traffic Commission will do, but we'll be back and see you then.
What we could do at the second meeting in February, we meet February 23, which is three days after Traffic.
Is that going to give your staff enough time to do whatever they need to do?
We're planning on it being on the February 20 agenda, so...
Perfect, okay.
All right.
That works.
Good, thank you, David.
Well, I know. We need a motion, folks, to continue item 4 to February 23.
Move the item.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 4 to February 23. Cast your votes, that's approved.
Item 5 is DA-24851, a deed approval located at 1309 Northwest 193rd Street.
Good afternoon.
Give us your name and address, please.
Martha Maliki, the address is 2490, I mean, I'm sorry, 1309 Northwest 193rd. We purchased this property about a couple of years ago, and in the deed was that section, that little part area, it was part of the property, and we were trying to build a pool actually behind the house, and when we went to the city, they couldn't get us the permit to build the pool, and they said there is no, there's no proof in zoning department about that section was added into our plat. And also, it says it in our deed, and also we have a quick claim deed back in 2006 was added into this house. There is, what is, there is the, it's been filed at the county, but it's not in the zoning department. Zoning department didn't have any...
So it shows up as two separate lots, then the lot your house is on and...
It was a part of a common area, and it was sold back in 2006 as a quick claim. They did a quick claim, and they added to this property, and the part that we're going to build the pool, which is behind the house, still doesn't show it in the zoning department.
And you're going to build a pool, obviously, close to the house and not all the way out into the...
Yes, it's right behind the house, exactly right behind the house. And we already had a meeting with the HOA, and they approved us, they looked at our plan, and they said they have no problem for us to building the pool, actually, it's to improve us the house, and...
Okay. No one signed up, commissioners?
So really, all we're being asked to do is to merge two lots into a single lot, just in terms of its description.
Yeah. There are other issues for another day, but...
Well, I think those other issues are really important. The fact that we're diminishing the amount of...
Common area?
Common area by doing this sale, and we could well establish ourselves as we moving beyond the point where that common area is required.
The sales already occurred.
I know it has.
Yeah, it's been sold back in 2006, May 3, 2006.
The reason I ask my question is because, yeah, I have a lot of questions about why this is happening, but I don't know if they're really appropriate for today, is my question. I have questions about whether it's diminishing the amount of common area and why that was being allowed to happen, and, you know, how...
That's the discussion we had in the pre-meeting today, exactly, is we need to be thinking about that as new subregs and ordinances are developed, along with the...
So is the answer that there wasn't anything we could do about that at this point? I mean, we don't have any mechanism to prohibit it or prevent it?
Well, as a practical matter, it's happened with several homes up and down this same block already, and this piece of property was carved out.
Pretty much all the houses in that block was added into, and I did move the fence, and somehow they had the fence permit at the time because they moved the fence, and also I talked to, for the easement, they had some easement in the back, and I got the letter from all four utilities that they would move the easement from that property.
Are you the gentleman who purchased the property originally?
Yes, no, originally during shaded and very shaded purchased it.
I mean, are we saying then that this has been done sort of as a systematic way of...
It's been done several times, and this gentleman bought it...
Getting rid of the common area in the neighborhood? I mean, it's, the association has sold it off because they don't want to maintain it or what? I mean, do we know? Do we care?
Not specifically in this case, but that could very well be the reason, is the neighborhood association couldn't afford or didn't want to maintain it, and private property owners did, but it does raise the broader question about, we require common areas and what's supposed to happen with them long-term.
I think that's what it was, that's why they sold it off to the other, to the owners, the lot owners, so that way we take care of it, and that's what we've been doing actually. Well, I had this property about a year and a half ago, about it, probably a year and a half ago, so we've been always mowing the lawn and taking care of the place, and I guess we've been paying taxes for it because it's been filed at the county, and there is filed at the county about this, but there is no proof in the zoning department, zoning department don't have. Well, it shows it on the computer, when you click on it, it kind of comes out, but there is no, it's not only your plat, that map that you have, it doesn't...
Well, what about the flood plain and drainage structures on the east side of the property? What is it there?
It goes there, we cannot change that. It's a drainage, it's still there, it's still there, it's concreted and it's there. There's nothing we can do about it, it's a drainage area, and it's like a canal, goes to the creek all the way back, which is all the way back there.
Okay.
At the end of the property, there's a creek right there, so...
I'm all in favor of you having a pool, that's not my problem at all. This is just really odd. Have we seen this before? I've not been aware of this kind of thing.
Well, at this point, I mean, it doesn't seem to me fair to penalize this gentleman when he bought this a couple of years ago from yet another owner who has had it for a long time, and it's sort of a pattern that's happened up and down, at least in this case. But like lots of things, we get a case, it points out something that we really need to spend more time thinking about as it relates to common areas since we require them in the first place. So we need an ordinance or a policy that deals with that as a broader subject going forward.
I move approval of this particular item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 5. Cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Have a great day.
Item 6 is SPUD-947 to rezone 1435 Southwest 22nd Street from R-3 to SPUD-947.
Oh, David, give us your name and address, please, for the record.
David Leder, 2612 Drake Stone. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Alom, I apologize for his absence. Mr. Alom took over operations in existing convenience store, and this was in a large residential housing complex. He decided to increase his food service operations, he made an application for permit. It was determined that the existing zoning R-3 did not allow for the use or the parking that he had available for his site, and our flood application is a attempt to rectify this.
Okay. This is to bring the, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have a question for staff about this. What would the parking requirement normally be for this site?
What would it normally be?
Well, I mean, we've got a situation where it says that the parking will be sort of, you know, deemed to be sufficient.
It would be one space for every 200 square feet of building.
And so do the math for me, would you, Jezz, if I'm not good at that? I mean, what, how far short of the normal requirement are we falling here?
How many square feet? I can't see it.
So we don't know. We don't know what they would be...
No, because it's a longstanding convenience store, it's been there for many, many years, and it just has the parking that it has.
Well, I assume that because it is located where it is, there's a fair amount of foot traffic to this location.
And no one signed up in protest. We have a motion and a second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 7 is SP-489 for a special permit to allow an outdoor use in the C-3 commercial district.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor of the Commission, Brian Kuhn, for the record, representing the applicant, Ben Alberts, with Lifetime Fitness is here handing out a little site plan showing what this project is, and also Brandon Kuhn, my office is also with us today. So this is, you may have seen this in the news and in the paper, Macy's is disappearing from Quell Springs Mall, and this new facility will be called Lifetime Fitness. There's 122 of them around the country. It's kind of like a country club fitness place without the golf course, is kind of how it's been described to me. It's northwest of the mall, so it's going to be where the parking lot is currently. The north and west side of this facility is where the current ring road... The north and west side of this facility is where the current ring road is, is Quell Springs Mall, so this isn't on the property north of Quell Springs, this is actually on the mall property. And the reason here, we're here today, we, the use is fine with the current PUD, but we have to have a special use permit, because we have outdoor tennis courts and swimming pool. So we have to have outdoor recreation, but be glad to answer any questions, pretty simple deal. But we would, we would ask for your approval.
You've got lots of apartments nearby.
Yes.
Are the only outdoor facilities going to be, kind of sports, it's gonna be pool?
I believe so, yes.
And not soccer fields, or softball fields, or that kind of outdoor facility?
No, no. And I think he, and on the site plan, I'm sure it's in that, here's, this shows where, this is where the mall is, down here. Macy's was here, or will be, still is, but won't be, building here, tennis courts, pool. That's the only outdoor that we're gonna have, is the pool and the district, so it's a pretty neat deal for Oklahoma City, I think.
No one signed up? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item eight is C. 6866, the final plat of the district, located south of Northwest 164th and west of North Portland. This does require variance to the subregs.
Again, for the record, Brian Kuhn, with Hewitt Zollers, representing applicant. This came before you, probably six, seven months ago. Lot of discussion with the neighbors to the east, at which time, we lowered our buildings, put in a lot of landscaping along that boundary, satisfied the neighbors at the end of the day. This is phase one. Our access is to Northwest 164th. Phase two will have the road that goes on to the south, and then out to Portland, comes with phase two. This one does need a variance, because our first phase has 34 units. And we talked about that a little bit at Planning Commission during the zoning, and at the preliminary plat stage, that we knew, because these buildings are six-plex, four-plex, we knew that we couldn't cut four units off, so it's back when Nick was still here, we had, we knew that we were gonna be at 34 units for phase one. There's several TEs, like she said, someone just make sure that the street's called a public easement. This was very interesting, that entrance to Northwest 164th was never platted, it was done in an easement, so it'll stay in the easement, it's a public easement, so it'll stay that way. We do have fire, fire suppression in all the buildings, which is good. That helps, as far as I think, a little bit on this variance request. And other than that, there was one other question about sidewalks, and I think I've got them drawn on here, you probably can't see it very well, but the yellow is the sidewalks, this is actually north is up. Every unit, of course, has sidewalk going to the front door, and then along the street that'll go to the common areas that are coming in phase two. And this drawing here shows where our common areas are. This is phase one, here, just to here, because of that number of units. And then we have large common areas in here, and those will come in phase two, and we've already turned in an amenity letter with the staff. So be glad to answer any questions you may have. Well, of course, market, market conditions, we hope to do as soon as possible. He is hoping that he's very successful in these first 34 units, and he'll go into phase two. Phase two will probably not have all the rest units, but phase two will have the access to Portland. And that was an agreed, agreed to in the PUD, and we have to have that second entrance, and we're, we're okay with that. But the next phase will probably be another half, maybe, so... But absolutely, that second entrance.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Well, I have just a comment, and it's a positive comment about the fire suppression systems in all the units. I really like that, and I'd like to see it happen in virtually every application we get in, because I think it really does, and the fire department would be, if they were here, they'd just raise their hand and say, yes, yes, yes. And otherwise, if it wasn't there, I wouldn't vote in favor of the variance.
Okay.
But, but I think that this fire suppression, the sprinklers, really make this application fine with me.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? We need a motion, variance to TE number eight. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE number eight. Cast your votes. The variance is approved. We have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Item nine is C. 6867, the final plat of Crystal Creek at Westbury, located north of Southwest 29th Street and west of South Morgan Road. It also requires a variance to the subregs.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And this, obviously, is a final plat that conforms to the approved preliminary plat. We have five TEs, four of them are just standard TEs. TE number four is a request for a variance, which was also granted with the preliminary plat, pertains to the length of the cul-de-sacs. Obviously, the code requires 700 feet maximum, these are right around 1,000, but if you look at it, there's no street stubs from the addition to the west, which is Castle Brook, nor to the south, which is South Point. We're bound on the north by a very large floodplain, Mustang Creek, and so that's the reason that we don't, can't conform to the subregs, and like I say, it was granted with preliminary plats, so we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioners, no one signed up?
I have a comment on the length of the cul-de-sacs. Has there been any consideration for intermittently, along particularly the one on the west side, for speed humps?
I don't even think that's permitted by your engineering department.
I've had this discussion for years now. It's, speed humps aren't a bad deal, and the fire department says they're not a bad deal. And speed humps are available in a huge number of cities.
Okay.
But what you've got is the potential racetrack that goes from there until you run into the common area.
And we had multiple and several discussions with the preliminary plat, but again, this is a final plat that conforms identically, street alignment-wise, to preliminary plat.
My comments are kind of an editorial comment-
Sure, I understand.
-about the, the length of a, a street without any kind of impediment at all to slow it down. And my assumption would be, is that along this street, and on these houses, that you have, you know, 30 or 40 of them, that there would be children playing out in the yard. Are there sidewalks in front of these houses?
There are, yes.
They all have sidewalks?
They do have sidewalks, yes.
That's good.
I agree.
Anyway, just an editorial comment.
Well, Public Works was gonna come up with some traffic calming solutions that they approved, we were expecting to hear that by the end of the year, I don't know if that's happened, frankly. Need to call Eric Winger and see if that's done. Pardon me? Well, I know, but Eric, there was a meeting between Traffic Commission and Planning Commission, which you might recall, and air, traffic calming devices were one of the things discussed at length. And the Public Works director said he thought he would have a series of those which Public Works would find okay by year-end. We need to check and see if that's been done, not with this case, but with cases later filed.
That's, that's the meeting that we discussed, like the policemen's holding up his hand, slow down for kids, you know, that used to be in the 50s, that, you know, the cap on there, or other suppression ideas. This is, this is a prime example where that's really needed, but we don't have any guidance to put those particular recommendations in place. So I'm not opposing it, I just think that this is an example of what you may, what we may encounter in months to come, with new regulations relating to, you know, the speed suppression and different types of things you can do with a long stretch like this, and I really encourage that, that moves quickly.
Understood.
Well, in this case, we need a motion to approve the variance to TE four.
No, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, and that's approved. To approve the variance.
Move for the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is S.P.U.D. 948 to rezone 12520 Northwest 10th Street from PUD 1086 to S.P.U.D. 948.
Mark Grubbs, 1819, South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant, what you have before you today is a S.PUD that is a part of the original PUD 1086, which is the market at Chaco, large commercial development, includes the Academy and many other high-intensity commercial stores there. The only reason that this S.PUD was being produced was to allow a shorter setback to the adjacent agricultural to the south and west. That land is completely in between a bunch of commercial in Yukon and to the west, more in Oklahoma City, so staff has reviewed this and supports it, we agree to the TEs, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We do have someone signed up to speak, Mark, Rick and Melinda Rushing. Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Rick Rushing, I'm at 12540, I believe, Northwest 10th. Concerning this zoning change is considering putting a four-story motel in front of my house. And that's my biggest concern, that and 24/7 traffic at my doorstep is a concern. If need be, I can get counsel and bring more, why it's impacting my property value and things.
Is your house the one directly south of this particular site that I see on the map here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And my entrance is all the way down the west side of that piece of property, coming in, coming in there.
Okay. So is your concern the setback, the height of the building, or?
Concern of the height of the building, of course, naturally, the traffic that it's gonna create over a commercial zone, as far as resident, I mean, retail and restaurants and things like that, normally close it down around 8:10, 11 o'clock at night, to, like I said, 24-hour people.
Mr. Grubbs, access?
The current, the current PUD allows for a six-story hotel, and the traffic's already there. There was never any protest to PUD 1086 that I was aware of, so the, really, the only thing we were changing, it's four stories, moving it back, but not for six stories. Six stories already permitted, it just had to be farther forward.
And access will be right from 10th Street?
Access would still be off of the side road, there's no access off 10th Street there.
That's what I thought, that's what I wanted to clear up, is I remembered that being the case.
Yeah, and Yukon's even, Yukon's even went as much to state that if his, if his drivers ever go to way to the west, it would not be permitted again. They told the developer of this original commercial portion that, so...
Okay. Commissioners, discussion, questions of the applicant or Mr. Rushing?
I have a question about this, it's the same thing that came up last meeting when Gerald Gamble wanted to have a piece of a current PUD redone to do something else that wasn't, that wasn't, to build the house.
Yeah.
And, and this S.P.U.D., I mean, I don't really know about setbacks or height, but, you know, it's, what you have now is a PUD, if they could do it, they would have six stories, you know?
And respective, sir, the reason there wasn't any opposition about it prior to, no notification of such matters to me.
Well, anyway, but this is, really, it's, my point is, is that when we encounter, encounter a PUD 1086, passed whenever it was, and, and there's every kind of use that you could possibly imagine being put in, plus special uses and overlay uses, it was, it was just the cookie jar of, you can put anything in this place as long as we can do this, it's just extraordinary PUD 1086.
For clarification, Bob, you were on the commission when we approved this, just...
When was it? Was I?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know anything then.
You've heard that here.
No, they fooled me. Well, but here's my point, if, if it's gonna be a hotel, eliminate the rest of this stuff, and just have a S.P.U.D., that you're gonna have a hotel with all the amenities that a hotel would do.
And I can address that, sir. The, the contract and the covenants both state, if for some reason this were not to develop as a hotel, the original developer can buy this back, and therefore, they don't want those uses to go away, so...
We encountered that when the Sam's Club was built on 39th and May Avenue, and you needed to rezone some little bit of, not you, but the Sam's folks, rezone some little bit of it over there, or to do something with their PUD. And the same thing, if it wasn't done, the owner of that and the, you know, didn't want to lose an I-2 designation, you know, that's, so, so, I mean, if the requirement was, you can build a hotel, why have all those uses? I mean, you know, if you're gonna do a hotel, do a hotel.
I, I don't disagree, it's just part of the REA that's in place, and also the contract that's in place, and that's why they asked that the PUD, I mean, the only, the only reason again for it was just to...
You see my point, that, I mean, even though I might have been on the commission when this was captured?
Well, and we were looking at 10th Street and I-40, and what's appropriate at that particular area and part of the city, too, if you recall the discussion. But what Mr. Grubbs is saying now is, if this hotel's built, those other uses go away, I mean, they're not gonna, won't be used.
That's right.
I mean, it's... So if we, if we approve this, we don't have to worry about those other uses.
It's a kind of a philosophical question about what we do-
Unless, of course, the hotel deal falls through.
That's right. I mean, I totally understand your point, and, you know, we, we have a system where zoning can only get more intense. The only chance that we ever have to adjust zoning to, you know, the appropriate uses around it is when people have to come to us and ask for something, you know? So I don't think that we should let those opportunities go by, frankly, I just, I think if, if this PUD were being presented to us today, I doubt very seriously that it would get approved. It's just, it's way too intense, not, there are no really significant restrictions on anything in it that I can see. And if they're gonna build a hotel here, then I think, you know, it ought to say that's what it's gonna be. And frankly, I'm not that crazy about that, given that it's going to absolutely loom over this gentleman's house, you know? But...
Well, they can move forward and build six, ten, six stories right now.
That's correct, and to the south is R4, high-intensity residential, and you have a shopping center, you have shopping centers to the north, you have commercial to the west, and the...
Say it again.
Well, yeah, I mean, on the corner, but that, that property all to the west is for sale, I mean, and, and the prices of it are, would presume, commercial's going to go there.
Commissioners? No? It's the only, yes, we've...
This was just, it was all approved as part of that shopping center, is 1086, and it's, I'm not, it's still part of the shopping center as it is, as designed. It's on the west side of the entry to the shopping center.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Do we have a second? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you. To the microphone, please, if you want to address us. You need to address us, not him.
I, I understand, I'm asking a question, I don't, I'm so naive about this situation that the... I don't, I'm so naive about this situation, that he, is he the developer or the motel builder?
You'll have to ask him outside the chambers, I don't know the answer.
All right. Then let's, to the concern of the development, what is the laws of this city about commercial up against residential farmland as far as fencing?
It's zoned, zoned to be permitted.
Excuse me?
It is zoned to be permitted.
Zoned to be permitted. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Are you, are you asking what kind of site proofing is required between this property and yours?
Well, I understand that this is supposed to be a privacy fence between commercial and residential, and...
J.J. Chamberlain, sitting right over here, can help you.
There's, there's a required, uh, fence, site-proof fence between your property and the hotel property.
And, uh, and what would be the timeframe?
Uh, it would have to be built before they could occupy the hotel.
Well, we've already fixed open stores on the east side of it already, so, I mean, I'm asking the city, I guess, I'm not really...
I can't answer a question, it's what their timing would be, but it's required before they could occupy the hotel.
All right.
All right. Thank you for coming down.
Items 11 and 12 were continued. Item 13 is C6865, the final plat of Point North, located east of North Pennsylvania Avenue and north of Northwest 150th Street.
Hello, Chuck Twivel with SRB Engineering at, uh, 100 Northeast 5th Street, Oklahoma City, 73104, and, um, this is just a single lot, single block plat. It's just required to be platted, so bringing this in, all the utilities are available for it.
Okay.
Sewers along the pin, water's on the other side, we'll have to bring it across.
Commissioners?
Well, I can't help, I can't help asking about signage. Do we know anything about the signage that's going to be, this is property that's zoned residentially?
Yes, yeah, it'll allow any residential use there, yes, but, uh, on my conceptual layout, I didn't show any signage. Cheryl will have to meet the city ordinances for it, you know, it's a small church site, you know, they probably want, uh, the ground sign.
There's a limitation on that, and, and EMD1 signs also, I think.
Code would allow an eight-foot, 100-square-foot monument sign.
No EMD?
I think maybe for a church, level one.
One.
Yeah, I think level one, you could, you could do that.
Which limits hours and the nature of the signs and so forth. And no one has signed up.
Before I second the motion, I'm excited to, um, be able to second this emotion, uh, second this motion today. So I second the motion. No, it's not my church, no. No, it is not my church.
He'd be in the other room if he says church.
Second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 13, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item 14 is C6854, the preliminary plat of Ashton Court, located north of Southwest 29th Street and west of South Sarah Road. Does require variances to the subregs.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. A few months ago, we came before you with the zoning for this. It's R1 zoning, and we met with the neighbors to the north, and there was a lot of concerns with regard to traffic impact and the Sarah Road conditions at 29th Street with regard to traffic, and specifically, the, um, traffic that goes through the neighborhood to the north on 21st Street kind of falls in line with one of the comments that Commissioner Bright made with regard to a shotgun street with no traffic calming devices. So, the plat that you see dashed on there was our original submittal to the staff to review, which included traffic calming, uh, if you look very carefully at the streets that go throughout the addition, they, the right-of-way bulges out, you can't really see it without a paving plan shown, but, uh, there were several traffic calming devices that were proposed, little median islands, uh, and then we brought our traffic to a center location, kind of dividing the plat into two pieces. The, in meetings that we had with our fire marshal, there are certain restrictions with regard to the width of the street and the width of the island that they wanted us to adhere to, which made these calming devices really impractical, impractical from a cost-effective standpoint. Understanding the neighborhood to the north's concern about, um, breaking the traffic up and causing the west part of our plat to go through their neighborhood, as opposed to go around the block and out to Sarah Road, uh, we resubmitted the plat to the staff with this design, showing that we brought the street, uh, back down and made a, a through street, but we did include one traffic calming device in the middle to break the traffic flow and speed, uh, and this does meet the fire marshal's required, uh, widths and separations and curves. Most likely, in our final plat design, we will end up with a, a median opening, uh, in the middle of this, so it'll make, uh, access to a couple of these lots a little easier, uh, but this is, and the plat, fire marshal was okay with this separation of median and width of lane, so we've created that. Uh, other things that we've done, as we, as we promised the neighborhood, we did push our entryway as far south as we possibly could, um, and I'll talk about the TEs in a minute, which includes a variance requirement. As part of the zoning case, we also, uh, our developer also volunteered me to work with them to, uh, make an application to Traffic Commission to allow some stop signs on their, on 21st Street, and we still are happy to do that for them and have offered that service, so, which is very needed. I've been through their neighborhood several times, and it's literally a shotgun, and causes problems. The property, as you recall, is bordered by the future turnpike, so that's what's created this tract of land. We have floodplain on the southwest corner, uh, that we're going to leave intact. Uh, there's a small stream at the south end that we're going to work with in our common area. Uh, we've got a, a park space identified, uh, and we're going to work with the staff with regard to waiver to the fees. Uh, so we worked really hard on this layout, and I know a couple of the neighbors are here, and they'll probably want to speak about it. So with regard to the TEs, the, uh, limited frontage, uh, on Sarah Road, because of the floodplain and the bridge that exists, creates, uh, the separation less than 500 feet, so that's why we're asking for the variance on that. One thing we did do to help improve this is we, we've got a greater separation between our, our in-and-out driveway, which will allow that, uh, impact to be, uh, it gives room for somebody to still leave if one car's trying to make a left in, into that, even not, because it's a two-lane road at this time. Uh, we anticipate that, uh, with the turnpike, there'll be some improvements, and we've talked to the neighbors about making sure that they get on the city site and log in about putting this as a, as a, um, future bond project, uh, to complete some widening up on, uh, from Sarah Road, 29th, 15th Street, so, uh, the city, Oklahoma City Mustang and Turnpike Authority from 29th Street South have an agreement in place that will, uh, allow for improvements. We also agreed, uh, and are, are standing by, we, we submitted a warrant analysis for 29th and Sarah Road to the city staff, along with a cost estimate to do a temporary signal improvement. We haven't gotten any feedback from that at, at this time. The second thing that's an issue with our TEs is regard to the site distance, and you guys had this conversation as well, uh, that's why I'm not sitting by this guy. So we have a situation, as you can see, this solid line represents the center line of the existing street, it humps up over the bridge. So, we actually did survey out there and then worked with the staff. The staff, uh, went out with their equipment and measured, and even with the, the proposed marks we put on the stakes, uh, they felt like it didn't pass, so, because this is a preliminary plat, this will allow us to come up with an engineered solution once we begin our final plan, so, we've agreed that we will submit to the staff an engineered solution, and what that will mean is, the grades of our entryway will have to be adjusted in such a manner that site distance is improved, coming and going out of our neighborhood. So, uh, we proposed that, and we'll include that in our final plans, and because, again, because this is a preliminary plat, you don't, you don't see our final engineering plans at this time, but we will, uh, be submitting those with the first-phase final plat, and that'll include that engineering solution. So that covers TEs 3 and 4. We agree with TEs 1 and 2. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tim, can we go back to the first, um, neighborhood layout? Uh, I've got two questions. The, the first is, uh, what happens if you move your entrance south right up against the, uh, common area there on the, what, east side of the, I mean, right up against Sarah Road?
It actually moves us closer to the, the bridge hump, which is, the bridge is right here.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
And if you moved it further north, I mean, it might, you might be adjusting lots in terms of how you lay it out.
Right.
What would happen if you do that?
Well, we didn't want to have our street right behind their houses. We, I mean, these are, we could move one side of the, we could move it up maybe 20 feet, uh, and that may be part of our solution, but...
So what's the distance if you move, I mean, if you did move it up against the house for a moment, I mean, I'm, I'm...
If we moved this from here to here?
Yes, I'm...
That's 125 feet.
And does that solve the site distance requirement?
I don't think it, without, uh...
Well, it's going to be 100 and some odd feet better, I assume.
And in this case, the main issue with the site distance is the bridge rail and the guardrail, because when you measure, we measure site distance from 10 feet back of the existing road at, at a three-and-a-half-foot height, and to see a target four-and-a-half feet tall, how far away we can see it. And there's the bridge and the bridge rail and the guardrail.
So that wouldn't help, in other words?
It may. We'd just have to go out there and, and check it, but at this time, where it's currently marked, it's 300, 370 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Versus what you need?
Versus, we need 620.
So it's half, roughly? Okay.
So we'll, the result will be is these, this road will rise as it approaches Sarah Road to give us the height we need to see over the rail, and we have yet to design that.
Okay, my, my next question goes back to the original board again, the neighborhood Along the north part of the neighborhood, uh, you've got, well, they're not cul-de-sacs, but where you would turn.
These?
Yeah.
You have knuckles, turning knuckles.
What, what happens if you connect that? I'm thinking about people getting to the, uh, common area that you're speaking of, and the people on the west side are going to...
Well, that would give us the same shotgun street they've got right there, and we don't, we think that's not a good...
Maybe with some traffic calming like you're doing on the road to the south?
Uh, we'd end up losing some lots.
I understand, but...
We could look at that, I mean, I, I don't know how that benefits the site distance or...
Well, it doesn't benefit site distance, what it does is give more ready access to the common area for the people who live in the west half of the, the development.
Well, from a traffic standpoint, that's, that's how we wanted to lay this out, we, we have stayed away from too much connectivity.
Right.
Because of the, because of the way the property lays, it just creates speedways.
Basically, it's well laid out to keep things, short block lengths and so forth, I agree with that.
And so, if we were to do anything connectivity-wise, I'd be more in favor of proposing a pedestrian access through there to provide...
Well, maybe that's a good idea, I mean, Janice likes it, I can tell you that.
And I'd be happy to, as we come in with our final plat, to make sure that, that gets included.
Yeah, I mean, of course, well, obviously, we would like people to walk to it.
Absolutely.
That's healthy and so forth.
We don't want them to drive there, we want them to walk there.
Okay, we do have a couple of people signed up, as you know, Sherry Compton first, please. Generally, yes.
Sherry Compton, 10608 Southwest 21st Street, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you can hold that up.
Is this like what he just showed you?
It's, it's similar, except for a traffic calming divider on the south road in between, in there.
Okay.
But it essentially looks the same, does it not, Tim?
Yeah. Okay. Well, the one on the back of the notice, if you'll look, is what got my brow going, and they've changed that, so I'm, I'm okay with that. Tim and I talked about on the phone with that.
Okay.
Uh, because we, they've met with us, our board, many, many times in my home over this, and we're trying to work together, and it's, it's, I mean, they're listening, and obviously, that got changed from a phone call, but our concern has always been, um, the back half of this neighborhood coming down 21st. 21st is a nightmare right now, and they're going to do 174 homes instead of the 154 that was proposed to begin with, I don't know where they came up with the other 20 homes, but on the notice that we got this last one, it said 154 homes. Now, this plat shows 174 homes.
Okay.
So, Tim has agreed to help us get stop signs on 21st Street, so I'm going to, I'm going to hold his feet to the fire to help us do that, because we definitely need that, and that will help us with the added traffic. Um, and, and so I'm, I'm reading that, and I'm going to hold his feet to the fire on that. I read your staff report on this, and I am concerned with the distance between 21st and 22nd on Sarah. That is, it's not enough, it's not enough space, according to your own regulations about what's required without a variance. So you give them a variance and throw the regulation out. That is a horrible spot, and the closer they get to the bridge, the worse it's going to be seen, because there is a big hump on that bridge. So, I, I don't know what their solution is going to be, it's, it's going to be a tough one to try to figure out, but I don't want them closer to my 20, my 21st Street, because we are now looking at the houses in Westbury that have been approved and the plat's been approved, that will dump out on Sarah as well, from 21st. That's what's going to happen. So if you will look at this little neighborhood, the regulation says that they want entrances to a minimum on a busy street, no number what they consider a minimum to be, so I guess that's open for discussion. But, but this little area is going to get even crazier than ever with the turnpike going in right south of us. I think that, that entrance is going to be allowed on 25th Street on Sarah, so, my hat's off to them if they can figure out what to do to make that entrance on Sarah out of their neighborhood work for them, but I appreciate the work Mr. Johnson has done with us and helped us, and like I said, we will. I have a question for you. What's the difference between a speed bump and a speed hump? Is there a difference?
Bob will tell you what they do. In Santa Fe, we're...
A speed bump is what you probably encounter at parking lots, in shopping centers, et cetera, that's a real round thing, and you go bang, bang over it. A speed hump is a gradual elevation where you can fly over it, but basically, it's not a, it's not a bang, but it's a, you've got to slow down, you know?
Are those allowed in the Oklahoma City streets?
No.
Thank you.
But, but we're working...
You got me excited for nothing.
But we're working on that.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of what Chairman, you know, alluded to, between traffic and the Plan Commission about speed suppression, and I have to say that this layout that they did with, with, with what we're looking at here, actually, the first one, that one, is designed to suppress drag races along the streets. This new one, even though you've got to go around something, you've still got a, you know, like a, a circle to go through, and kids in their Mustangs will just say, hey, you go on the left side, I'll go on the right side, and we'll meet. So I, I liked your first design better for traffic suppression, but, but we're working on that sort of thing, it's not ready yet, but, but that's the difference between a hump and a bump.
All right, well, I was curious, and I was so hopeful we could do humps.
Well, yeah, no, that's, it would, it would be beneficial to you on 21st Street.
Yeah.
To have that, but we can't do it yet.
Okay.
Well, and stop signs will give you some help, because people will recognize them, and they'll slow down. They won't always stop, because people will float stop signs.
They won't slow down either, because we've got 25 mile an hour speed zones, and that doesn't help, but our concern is that traffic in the back of that new neighborhood using us as an exit, because we're easier than anything they've proposed so far, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm... Is it Mr. Rao, Rowe?
My name is Rodney Rowe, 10744 Southwest 21st Street. I just wanted to discuss, first off, just like Sherry, I had other things to bring up here today until we realized that the plat was changed. With them raising the elevation of the road... With them raising the elevation of the road to make up for the bridge, where does that create the drainage, going back into the neighborhood?
Well...
How high of a, of a grade are we talking?
Mr. Johnson can answer that. He's the engineer.
We, obviously, we won't know until we do it, but we will not take any drainage north. All that drainage comes south, so any, any blockage that's created by our drive will be storm-served to the creek. But more than likely, as we raise our drive, our lots adjacent to that drive will come up as well. So there won't be, we won't block flow.
And, and that was my question. If you're raising the lots on the north side of your spot there, it's going to be higher than the lots that are to the north of it, which would mean that effectively, water would go downhill. Correct?
I'll, I'll be happy to. These are final plat issues, and we'll be happy to meet with them about that. But I, I don't, that property drops so fast to the south, I don't know that will impact them, and I, that would be part of our...
And that's part of the engineering that goes into it, and the city's engineering staff will review that. We don't really deal with drainage directly here.
Okay.
Because we're not frankly qualified to deal with the drainage.
And then with the, with the frontage spot, I guess I would just ask you, how do we go about trying to get a speed variance done there? Is that something we have to do with the city also?
That has to, that would go through the city's traffic commission. And...
Okay.
My, my comment about that would be the same as it was with Mr. Box's case earlier, which is taking a 45 mile-an-hour speed limit and dropping it to 30 does not solve any problem out on the ground. Was it 40 to 30? That was the earlier case. This one is, isn't this one 30, dropping it to 30, or am I mis... Huh? That's what I thought.
I don't believe they're proposing...
That was the staff, that's the staff note I read.
We're not proposing a speed change on Sarah at this time. We're going to propose to come up with this, an engineered solution for our entryway so that we can meet the setback requirement as, with the speed as it is. So that's, that's where we are.
Okay.
You're going to engineer a solution rather than drop the speed?
All right. Other, other than that, thank you very much.
So are, do we want to, are we needing a variance to TE4 if we're going to do that? You're requesting variance relating to site distance for roads with a posted speed limit of 45 miles an hour, and if you're going to have an engineering solution, do we need a variance?
No. My agreement with the traffic staff was when we bring our final plat in, we will have an engineered solution to meet the criteria as it is, as it's posted.
And, and if there's some reason why you can't come up with a solution, then we have the same argument.
Right.
That David had on his application, well, this is a final plat, and you approved the variance, and therefore, but I can probably guarantee it, is that the same result would be, if you don't come up with a solution, final plat or not, if it's going to be...
Yeah, I agree.
A safety issue that the city recognizes, I won't vote for it.
Right. We understand, I understand that. This is, I think the TE just needs to be modified, that we'll bring in an engineered solution prior to the final plat, and the, and if part...
We don't need the variance.
Right.
If you're going to do that. But we can have a TE4, as you suggest.
Exactly.
Okay.
What, what is the difference between what you have and what you need on your separation of the two streets?
Currently, we're only about 300-foot separation. So the zoning code or, or the subdivision regulation suggests 500. So we'd be in the creek at 500.
Come up to the microphone, please.
It doesn't actually suggest it. It says shall be held, or it says the distance between such intersections shall not be less than 500 feet unless a variance is, is done. So I just want to...
Shall means must, same thing.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm with you. And that's the separation between 21st and...
And our proposed street, correct.
Okay. It's a conundrum, because it comes back to public safety for me. So in order to satisfy TE3, would then that require the 15 mile-an-hour speed drop?
Uh, I don't think the separation...
Am I right on that?
I don't think the 500-foot separation was based on speed or anything.
500 foot is not based on speed.
Okay, that was...
It's just in the subdivision regs.
Okay. But it's obviously for public safety reasons, not having a lot of cross-traffic. Is that the point?
Trying to separate the conflict points.
Okay.
Good news is, we don't have a conflict point across the street.
Yeah, that's true.
It's mostly floodplain up there.
I'm going to move the variance to TE number three.
She moved the variance...
I'll second the motion.
She moved the variance to TE number three. So we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE number three. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Tell me again what we need to do to TE number four?
We're going to modify TE number four and say that the developer will return with an engineering solution to solve the site distance requirement.
But we don't need the variance.
Roads posted at 45 miles an hour.
But we don't need the variance.
Correct.
So I'm going to move the application.
Modifying the TE4, as I just said.
That's right. Say that again? Oh, yes, and adding...
Yeah, thank you.
Good, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, we have a mo, a motion and a second to approve item 14 as conditioned. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
The remaining items were either continued or withdrawn.
Planning Commission members, any discussion? On what? I'm sorry. We should ask for a staff report on that, and then a suggestion as how we address it. Okay? Anything else from Planning Commission members?
Just another, the timing on the traffic suppression, when's that going to, when do, when are we going to revisit that?
Aubrey is going to check with Eric on whether they've adopted those traffic calming devices that we talked about at the joint meeting.
Okay.
Or find out when that will happen.
And would...
Eric was telling us it'd be by year-end when we met with him.
Okay. All right.
Planning Department, Aubrey? Development Services, J.J.?
Municipal Counselor.
Gee, everybody's whole staff is quiet today. Citizens to be heard. Is there any other business? Motion adjourned at 2:58 p.m.